There's 412 fifth grade students, 421 sixth grade students, and there's a whole section less. So having been a teacher and knowing what the difference between 20 kids and 24 kids feels like, I just hope that as we move forward and we discuss things like all the kindergarten and everything else, that we just keep this in mind because I think that, you know, there's a lot of value to having closer to 20 kids in a class and, you know, 21, 24 sounds good. Like I said, we make improvements, but for some of our upper elementary kids, they're not really experiencing 21 kids. So that's just my statement. Do you have any comments?
I did want to make one comment that I thought was important in the exchange of students between Hackton and Foxborough. One of the administrative problems that existed in Plancher prior to KSC's regionalization was the volatility of the small population and managing by classes. It was just hard to set up a way sometimes to have really small and therefore just unportable. And one of the things that I thought was very nice and you could see in the current, is now there's the halls between the classes. And just to slightly comment about what Tess said, because in any given class, you can have to come to school during the year or to leave school during the year, you know, there's always going to be a range of at least plus minus one student, you know, on the grades. It's just impossible to have yet so that while we might say that there's a difference between 21 and 23, our ability to avoid, you know, experiencing that may just be zero. So it's just.
But I said 20 and 24, not 21 and 23. There's a big difference.
So for the number that we have, 67 kids of us from elementary to junior high, I think. Can you open? So I guess the general question I have is, since we have these kids in our school, do we usually keep our school student from junior high to elementary to junior high versus junior high to high school? Is there usually a kind of more like a percentage drop that kids relocate or is that every year very different? Have we ever done any analysis for this where the 67, is it because the kids go to private school? Is it because the most family relocate? Have we ever? Because I'm trying to get to see if this number, it will be kind of be able to more predictable than for the future here. And the second question I have is just also a general question, which is if you take a look at the current preschool or kindergarten, do you see any kind of differences when you're looking at our senior in high school in terms of composition, in terms of like different background, different racial, different races or different? Do you see any differences? Just kind of general observation because that will affect how we're gonna be able to plan for the future.
Yeah. So we did not drop 67 kids from elementary to junior high. In fact, sixth and seventh grade are very comparable. Total number of kids. We dropped 67 kids across the elementary school from a year ago. And we dropped 64 kids in seventh and eighth grade from a year ago. If that makes sense? So I don't. So we have not lost a lot of kids from sixth grade to seventh grade. And in fact, when we compare to other districts, there's some drop off in seventh grade. There's some drop off in ninth grade, but it's pretty small here. I want to say 3%, but I'd have to look it up. And some kids go to Minuteman, some kids go to private, seven, 12 or nine, 12, but far lower than a lot of our district.
So 3% is pretty constant year to year. Can you say that?
In seventh grade or ninth grade, I think. Not year to year. We don't lose that many. I mean, we have a lot of move outs and a lot of move ins. But, all right, so that's the first question. The second question, yes, demographically, our student body has changed significantly from our current kindergartners to our current 12th graders. I think the biggest change is in socioeconomic. So we went in that 10 to 12 year period, we went from 2.5% of our students being on free reduced lunch to 11% of our students being on free reduced lunch. Our EL students have grown significantly. When I say 4 people or more, from 80 kids to 450 kids on receiving services for English language. And then the racial makeup has become more and more Asian American, African American, and Hispanic. All those numbers have grown a lot. Thank you. Dr. Bailey, this morning actually talked about when she was a student here, we were 99% white and now we're 58% white, 53% white. I will test because it's definitely different. I could maybe name, I don't really know if I could name five Asian students in my thoughts. So.
One thing I'll add, Maria, to this, but our incoming kindergarten class saw a significant rise in number of Hispanic and African American students over what we experience as a district as a whole. And that was a significant change that Dr. Bailey and I had talked about. And I think it really highlights the work that we're trying to do now around that conclusion to make sure that we really are well prepared to serve all the students in our district as we move forward.
So the changes that we see in our district, is that comparable to our surrounding? Is that the kind of the trend in the area?
You know, we haven't got a full analysis for the area, but I can tell you statewide, we are seeing that. I think, you know, a hypothesis potentially for that is as cities become more and more expensive, you know, the talk of gentrification of our cities, real estate prices are going up and, you know, traditionally affordable developments in cities are now becoming, you know, new developments that no longer are affordable to all people. I think what we're seeing is a migration of populations a little bit around the state and we're seeing a lot of suburbs increase in diversity of their residents.
All right, so in your packets, you have the proposed calendar for the next school year. And so we're making this point to continue to present. So next year turns out to be a fairly simple year to do the calendar for. Labor Day is later, so it's September 7th. So that gives us a full week that we can have school before for kids and teachers, the teacher startup days can be the week before that. So what we're recommending is that the teacher meetings take place on Wednesday and Thursday, August 26 and 27, and then kids start on August 31st. They would go four days that week. And then contractually, the Friday before Labor Day is a no school day. And it's would be Labor Day and then so on after that. In terms of the religious holidays, Marsha Shaanah is on a weekend. So Yom Kippur is on the calendar as a no school day, as is Good Friday. So we thought we don't really need to explore that issue again and kind of go with the standard calendar that we've gone with with the start for students, the Monday before Labor Day, August 31st. And then end of school would be between June 9th and June 16th. That would be zero to five snow days, June 9th to June 16th. It could, we always have to caveat, it could go longer, go more than five snow days. It's happened once or twice in the last 20 years.
There will never be more than five. We are headed to zero again this year.
No comment.
The calendar looks great. I have a question. The seven to 12 early release dates, there's two on the calendar with double asterisks. What day is that actually?
We haven't scheduled them. And we don't necessarily have to vote those dates.
No, I'm just curious.
We do them later in the year because we have to be further along with our planning.
No problem. Yeah, this really gets me.
I want to apologize to the class of 2021 because this calendar combined with the year's given the ten snow days means that the bonus for being a senior is reduced in this calendar.
Thanks, Maria. So that's a first read. We would ask for your vote on November 21st and then we can get it out to families so they can plan. If there are any questions between now and then, please send them along. So next on our agenda is the resolutions for the annual meeting this week. So we got them out to you early so that you could take a look and make sure that you had read them as we need to give Angie some direction in how we want her to represent our school committee. Diane, if there's anything else you want to say about the particular? Do you want, do we want just a consensus? Is there anything that?
So this is how it goes. Angie can vote the way she wants, but it's best practice to have her edge bro with the consensus of the committee.
Does anyone feel strongly yes or no about any of the particular resolutions? Anything you definitely want her to vote no on? Anything you definitely feel that we should be supporting?
The one resolution that I have some concerns about is the resolution to continue to educate our students. And obviously, you know, I, as everyone else, would like to see an official endorsement of what I started to embody. Having said that, the specific element of this resolution that concerns me is relates to the NTAL and the NTAL's test for educator licensure. Like a lot of these standardized tests, like SATs and everything else, even if there are issues around cultural bias. But I do actually still feel strongly that there should be some, you know, independent assessment of some matter expertise. And the resolution says that, you know, this doesn't prove that anybody who's a good teacher is passing this test. And that's absolutely true. But if the algorithm criteria that we don't file, the educator criteria, you know, things could be pushed out and the teaching degree will less improvement maybe. You know, so I think it is an element, you know, that there should be assessment of some matter expertise. So therefore, you know, I would like us not to support this resolution for the hour this year.
So I will weigh in on that one because I have taken the NTAL. You know, just as many colleges have been moving towards not requiring things like the SAT and the ACT because of the reasons that you mentioned, I don't know that we've developed a test that could really sort of elicit the kind of skills that we would hope educators have. I mean, there were questions on that test that are, you know, like basic proficiency as what I would, you know, say a human being needs to have. I mean, for a teacher, but, you know, I don't know if it's of much value in determining who becomes a teacher and who doesn't and if it is a significant, you know, obstacle for teachers who are coming from out of state and things. You know, that's the thing. Teacher licensure is not always transferable and I don't know. I feel like we are definitely at a deficit of some of the teaching staff that we'd like to be hiring and this is just another obstacle, but those are my opinions.
Yeah, so when we had a previous discussion about the percentage of white and non-white students in our district, that we learned that 50% of our students are white, roughly 50% are non-white. I would be in favor of anything that removes barriers to provide an equitable view from the other side of the classroom for our district and for any other district in the state. I don't think this precludes us from putting in any requirements at our own district level around professional certifications that may exist. And in fact, what the resolution calls for is that that the governance and licensure of professional educators be vested in a portion comprised of licensed educators. So one of the biggest issues they have with the current system is that it's made up of a group of non-educators or these non-licensed educators. So I'm in favor of this because I would much rather see a more diverse teaching population in our district with the caveat that we do our due diligence and hiring any second.
That was, of course, the other element of this, you know, giving some odds, which is a question of do you have independence in your assessments? And so there's always chance, right? Because on the one hand, you want assessment to be done by people with expertise, yet on the other hand, you would like those people to be independent of the rule that's being assessed. And that's sort of a fundamental part of our problem. The, you know, function of our school committee as a global grant amateur at some level says that, you know, it is not inherently problematic that people who are not subject to that as words provide governance for complicated activities. So, you know, I still, you know, certainly I believe in the NTAL could be improved. I believe that, you know, there's always going to be attention between these kinds of standardized assessments and whatever else you can do. But it is a reflection of my own educational background. You know, I'm sort of sad to see every assessment in this type of.
Angie, I would not, I would, I would go in, you know, I don't know if person says this, but I think the NTAL establishes a baseline of knowledge. It's not intended to be the all and all of whether or not you're a good teacher. I think that's important to establish a baseline of knowledge. Whether or not it is a disincentive for a more diverse workforce, I'd like to know more about it. I don't think I have enough information. I don't like that there are no practicing educators on the licensure or the equal decisions. Sort of peel those two apart from each other. I support that latter, the licensure will run before or so. Overall, I don't think I would support the resolution. I think it has some good.
Just going through the resolutions and listening to what was said, I would agree with Diane completely on resolution two. The others, I feel are really important. So yeah, so I would say support them.
I think there's also worth spending a minute to talk about resolution six and seven, which I might be very closely related. Resolution six relates to youth equality of pre-kindergarten access in marriages. And resolution seven relates to poverty and children. And from my, you know, current understandings, people have tried a lot of educational interventions which ultimately have been concluded to be unsuccessful because of poverty. So to the extent that there needs to be a prioritization, you know, I would like to see emphasis being put on poverty and children ahead of resolution six, which is youth equality.
So I'm confused. So you're suggesting that, that, so we're voting on each one of the resolutions. I don't think we're prioritizing them. So are you suggesting that we need to, that you would like to prioritize?
What I'm suggesting is that voting for everything is sort of voting for nothing because not everything can be funded. So I would vote no on resolution six, not because it's not necessarily something that has some value, but because I'd rather see the money energy put into resolution seven.
So I disagree because access to universal pre-kindergarten has a profound impact on especially neighborhoods of extreme poverty where there is absolutely no access. So I think it has, it can have a profound impact on a student's ability to learn throughout their whole education, their whole school career.
I agree with Diane as well. I think that there are really something like 6,000 girls that come through the legislature each year. If we didn't have a voice in some of them, there are just by default, there's only going to be a very small percentage of those that go through. So whatever is important to us needs to end up, you know, on the desks and in the minds of other people. All right, Angie, you feel comfortable with feedback?
Yep.
Okay. Could that afford like five minutes at a time? All right. All right, so in your packets, we have minutes for the meeting, clock number 17. Ms. Jeffrey? Angie? You have to turn your mic on.
Yeah. I made, hold on one second. I need to get my comment out. I have sent a change on the, under the section, challenge success 3.4. So because I would like to include a question that the survey cannot grasp how we have improved the rigorous of our homework. And also I have raised the concern about the gap of between the elementary to the junior high and high school. So I would like to add those two questions.
So Angie, when we, when we amend minutes, it's not, if we're looking at, we're looking at this to portray it accurately, it's not a transcript of what happened at the meeting. And we can't just add things that you feel like, adding specific questions isn't the same thing as whether or not the minutes reflect basically what was said at the meeting. So I'm a little confused as to what you're asking.
But that was discussed and the work I was bringing up in the meeting.
Right, but every single person's questions are not reflected in this, in this because it's not a transcript. So that's a better way to do it. So if you have a proposed suggestion, an amendment to this, to change it, then why don't you send us that? We will table these for now and we will approve it in the next meeting. Okay?
Yeah, sorry, I sent it late this afternoon. We decided in next meeting.
That suggestion is. Okay, that's fine. Last minute's hard, so. Okay, thanks.
If there's anything, this, we were short, so I hope you guys don't think we've been.
Of course.
Interesting about the product.
Absolutely. Angie, I'm sorry, I just see the email from you now. Okay. So Angie, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, so Dave is up next with our first quarter financial report and information on the end of the search.
Okay, thank you. So this presentation was made to the budget subcommittee and you've got a four-page memo and some supporting documents that I won't take the time to go through in detail just to highlight revenues for the first quarter. We're projecting by year end to be about $188,000 to the good compared with $426,000 this time last year. There is the potential for some additional money from a supplemental budget that's being discussed at the State House. And I explained that later in the memo as well. The memo goes on and takes about a page of detailed variances for each one of the revenue levels. For expenditures, I put some commentary in about personnel and health insurance and state assessments. But for the remainder of the expense categories, it's too early in the year to make any meaningful projections and that's typical for the first quarter. So I can entertain questions about where we are so far in FY '20. The rest of the memo talks about how we wrapped up FY '19. The E and D projection that I gave to preliminarily was the one that we were willing to be submitted, that we have submitted, I should say, to the state. The audit has been completed. I just received the finished financial statements in hard copy yesterday. And so we'll distribute those. And we're in the process of arranging the annual OPEP. We will have a report later in the year on OPEP. And we've begun FY '21 budget as I think everybody is aware. I put in some other information on incoming fractions, which again, if there are any questions, I can answer by speaking for itself. And that was the four-page memo, short and sweet. In addition, the budget subcommittee got the schedule for the FY '21 budget development. And you can see that in detail as well as the FY '21 budget guidelines. And those were, those were discussed and picked around at the budget subcommittee with some changes and edits made as the finished product.
I remember last year that when we got closer and closer to voting on the budget, there was some confusion about wanting to put other things into the budget or why weren't certain things in the budget after we had, I think this happened maybe in January. So I think it's important to realize that now is the time to really ask those questions and have those discussions around the table. Rather than, so that when we give it to January, we're all kind of in consensus, consensus? We're all, we're all together with the budget. So this is the, this is the time to put those things out there.
So the administrators in the district have all had their budget packages for about one and the submission date happened earlier this week. So we were beginning the process of digesting the requests and putting that all together in a comprehensive package. But that's the administrative side. So to the extent there's school committee input in the process, I'm not sure I remember specifically what you're talking about, Amy, but you write now is the time to come up with a, hey, what about this versus January?
I'll just add that, that, gosh, it's been about a month or two now, but just to pop it out, say, that school committee members have a meeting in small batches. We're just intended to voice any concerns or ideas they have, not just about the budget, but about just everything. So that conversation is kind of ongoing throughout the year. I think that when people suggest things in the mid-cycle, it's just indicative of just not really having a full understanding of the budget cycle and when is it appropriate. And it's complicated, but it's an ongoing conversation that happens up here.
So I think, you know, the other thing to add to that, Diane, I think we tried to take a little different approach to the budget guideline this year where it actually started with the school committee and going from those parts of the budgets up, then bringing it to the full committee for approval here so that we had some real guidance to start this process from the committee about what we were looking for in the budget. Now we've come to come upon possibly using these guidelines to go back and really figure out how we draft the budget that needs, as many of these or all of these so that we can move that forward here. And then we come back to the full committee and go through that same process again. So just, you know, I think, you know, using this process on the budget guideline is so critically important because it gives us the guidance about what we're looking for for us to come back to in December and January.
Well, and I'll also note that the budget guidelines as developed and brought to the full committee really represent what we have purged over in terms of our own interests and what goes into the budget. I think that that's another place where people aren't always clear how much say we have or what, you know, how we break forth our particular interests and our particular skill sets in developing a budget. And just also that one of our budget guidelines was to explore bringing tuition free opportunity and our real note on the budget timeline and that will be brought for an update in our next one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'll give the building for the update. So the biggest update tonight is we're seeking your official vote from the school committee for appropriate funds for the design and construction of the building project. So we voted last night on the summary that's appearing in Boxer, which is your recommendation for that. We've drafted the summary of the actual project itself that says on office of the communities, which is just at the staff level summary of the, the warrant article, but we're really looking forward to the official vote. I will tell you, this language has been vetted by just about every attorney in the world. There are new decks going on that, and these attorneys' houses, as we see, and we're proud to be supported by local attorneys at the guard. But in all seriousness, this has been through our attorneys at the district level, it has gone to bond councils at the district level, it's been sent to the town, whole towns attorneys, whole towns bond councils, it then went to MSBA, and then we had a suggestion. So we did that process all over again, and then we had another suggestion, so we did the process a third time. So we're pretty confident at this point that, that we're set in this language. So we are proposing this incredibly detailed motion for tonight's regular big approval of that.
I hereby move that the active Boxer Regional School Committee, the district, hereby appropriates the amount of $116 million, $28,519 for the purpose of paying costs for the design and construction of the new CTW slash Paul Gates Elementary School and Carol Cutner Early Childhood Program into a single facility at the Gates School Site located at 75 Screw Street, Acton, including a payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set an amount to be expended at the, at the direction of the district's school building committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Chapter 17, 71, 16, section, uh, 16D of the General Laws and the Agreement for a Regional School District for the towns of Acton and in Boxer, Massachusetts, the regional agreement, as revised effective July 1st, 2014, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Any premium received upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL, section 44, uh, sorry, Chapter 44, section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The district acknowledges that MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program that's done need. As determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district occurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be in sole responsibility to the district, provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA shall not exceed the lesser, one, 49.7% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the maximum, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. And that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA. I further move that within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby be and hereby instructed to notify the board of selectmen of each of the member towns of the district as to the amount and general purpose of the debt deferred and authorized, as required by the aforementioned regional agreement and by Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws. That was explicit.
And we do repeat that.
Probably were trying to get out earlier.
Is there a dissection?
Yes, although I'm very happy the motion has read, including the MSBA dollar vote again. After this motion in the packet, there's some important internal of MSBA, and there are events that actually have now turned this out, and I'm glad that you were discussing at this point what is brought us to this vote, as well as saying the result of the files, this vote. So, so I was hoping you could speak to the letter we received from MSBA.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, too. I was wondering if you wanted me to put that for rebuilding calculator, too. So, yeah, we had an opportunity on October 30th to go to MSBA, which was their formal board meeting, and we received MSBA's official authorization to proceed with the project. And we received word of the maximum feasibility grade, the way they stated in the letter, you know, we've been talking about $38 million, which is the estimated grade, that continues to be the estimated grade, but a piece of that is based on the contingencies of the project. So a portion of our overall project budget is contingency, which means we don't spend it unless we need it. And so MSBA reserves a portion of their reimbursement in this contingency as well, that they don't reimburse us unless we spend our contingency. So that's why you see a couple of different numbers in the letter. Essentially, what this letter triggers is a project scope and budget, budget funding agreement with MSBA, where we cannot, we will not receive any more than their maximum reimbursement. And the maximum reimbursement eventually is subject to an audit process, so they withhold their final payment until the project is fully audited. And so if you change the scope of your project along play, when they conduct the audit, if you dumb things that don't, were not proposed in the original funding agreement, they reserve the right to reduce your eventual reimbursement. So that's, we had a couple of questions that he, about why couldn't the reimbursement be lower, we didn't fully understand that, and it's really based on that final audit of the project, where MSBA determines your final payment amount. The big piece that this triggers moving forward is we have 120 days to secure funding from both communities for this project. And as you know, that takes the requirement of four votes to lead the funds project. There is a special time meeting that needs to take place, we walk back in to Boxer, at which time there'll be, you know, there's an article that goes in the warrant, and then there's a motion around the floor, which is similar to what we did, although at the town meeting, because the towns have to authorize funding for this project, and they are the town meetings of the appropriated volume for that, that carries within a clause in there to require a debt exclusion in order to do that. That piece of the article language in the town meeting warrants will have actually been triggered the need for a vote of ballot subsequently. So it's kind of a tricky process, there's four votes, but essentially what we're triggering is coming up special time meetings, and then following that ballot elections, the town meeting is to approve the project itself, the ballot election is to approve the debt exclusion to fund that project, and that's, that's the legal structure.
I just wanted to point out that the town meeting vote requires two-thirds vote to approve, whereas the ballot vote requires just over 50%.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exception? All right, that passes, you may listen.
Other building project update, last week we hosted a forum at Douglas Elementary School, the school building project. It was a small group, but it was a great group, and then they asked some fantastic questions, they had an opportunity to tour Douglas, and were, you know, the reactions were somewhat horrified when we brought them to that basement level of Douglas, which is typical standard reaction to the basement level of Douglas. Couple of things we've now updated, our building project website, subsequent to that, we do have a video online now on our building project website, where people can actually see the existing conditions of both Douglas and Gates, and here are principals explaining what's going on in those facilities. I want to thank Active TV for working with all of our principals, and those schools to be able to put that together. I think that's important for the community to really understand why we're doing this project. I think the other element I want to highlight is Active TV did don't perform last night, including all of the community, most of the things that were asked, and also, it's already been turned around, it was posted on our website, we also posted that, mentioned social media pages, so that it's accessible to us and to the whole community as well.
Yeah, it's not a social media, it's there. All right, we have subcommittee business up next, so Angie, would you like to speak to policy?
Yep, we had our policy meeting last Monday, and in your packet is the proposal for tutoring policy, but I'm going to let Marie speak to it.
I think we can, well, we can all.
Okay, so I, I skipped over something on the agenda, because all I saw were waiting minutes and current fire, but there, there is some special time meeting planning that we can discuss, so.
I think it's really, I don't know, it's a, maybe it's easier to do that now.
All right, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
This quite, it's not that long.
Do you mind, will you, if I worry?
Sorry, I have a second.
Correct, no, you have one.
I just wanted to make sure, okay. So, for the special time meetings, we have presenters at school committee, and so it has been decided that in acted, John will be introducing the project, right, in the meeting of, of, language, am I right?
Yes, so typically, each time the, there would be a 10 or so-minute presentation, providing some overview of the warrant article, and introducing the article for discussion, so I would do that in acted, so.
Okay, and then Peter is going to give the presentation that goes along with the building project. And in Boxer, I will introduce the warrant, and Mary will do the presentation, Mary Baldwin will do the presentation.
And just for anybody who's completely clear, the town, the town meetings are running at the same time, hence we have a divided, or a strategy.
And I think, and just, so you know next steps on that, I think, Tessa, John, Mary, I need to sit down and actually start that plan now for exactly how this is going to be presented, and who's saying which portions of the papers are taken.
All right, now, Marie will talk about the tutoring campaign.
So in your packet is a draft of the tutoring for pay policy. Over time, we've learned that updated ethics guidelines and rules around things like tutoring have changed over time, and our policy was not consistent with kind of ethics rules. In particular, we did allow teachers to use classrooms for tutoring outside of school hours with permission of an administrator. The guidelines do not allow for that anymore. So we have updated the policy, the policy subcommittee has worked through it over a period of time. It is truly to be consistent with ethics guidelines. So there's an FAQ, and there's a link to the FAQ, which makes a lot of questions about it clear that we've put into the policy. We sent it out to teachers, both as a communication process, so they're aware that this change is coming, and for their feedback, and we've got some feedback, and we processed it at the last policy subcommittee meeting. So this is the first reading for the public. We are recommending, so we've sent it out to teachers for some feedback, we're recommending, and in the next couple of days, we send it out to families, so they're aware that this is coming. We may get some feedback on that as well. We will bring that back to the next policy subcommittee meeting, which is November 19th, and then, assuming all goes well, we would bring it back to the school committee for a second, we invoke on December 5th, and with an idea of implementation on February 1st. So we have notified teachers that February 1st would be the, the date we're targeting for implementation, which is essentially the beginning of the second semester.
To add one thing to that, because I think, you know, we know this is a significant change for a lot of our community, and we all just want to have a change of the solution. And in all honesty, one of the effects of this policy going into effect is actually around equity, and making sure that we have equitable access to all of our school programs, whether or not somebody can afford tutoring. And being able to afford tutoring should not be an indicator of how successful someone is in our schools. What we want to develop next are actually three, after school tutoring centers that are funded by the district, which are essentially drop-in centers for the junior high and high school, where we staff them with teachers in English, language arts, and mathematics, at least to start and see how that goes with a set number of staff. We're hoping to start that this year, to be able to see what we can get going, it'll certainly be a pilot year, but then reevaluate that into the next school year. But, you know, fundamentally, our belief is that all students should have access to and answer help for your charge.
Can a teacher be listed as a chair on the website at the seventh?
Yes, we are going to go back to having a tutoring list on the website. We can't discriminate against who would like to be on that list, so anybody who requests it could be on it. So we put in a little bit of information about the tutors, so that families would have something to work from. There would be a disclaimer that we're not recommending, the district is not recommending any of the tutors on the list, it's just simply a vehicle to make a list. They cannot advertise, though, in the schools, they can't tell their kids, their students, that they're available for tutoring. Nobody's ever been able to tutor their current students, that's always been a rule, but there's, they're not allowed to use school resources to share the fact that they're available for tutoring. If someone asks them, they can respond, but they cannot come up.
So my second question was, can a teacher tutor for free? And the reason I'm asking that, that a teacher might, might want to, but there are tutoring centers that are free, too. So I'm just kind of curious about the whole, like, free things that now, you brought up the equity piece, which is really important, and I think that should be pursued, but there are centers that offer free tutoring outside of the schools you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so how, how is that off limits, or none?
No, I wouldn't see that as off limits, because they're actually, I think, in that role, working with the capacity of their job as a teacher in our district. I think the issue with the ethics policy is that essentially, when a teacher uses our facilities and receives payment for that, we are providing access to a teacher to run private business in our facilities for free, and yet we're not providing that same access to anyone in the world. We essentially could continue to allow teachers to access our facilities for free to provide tutoring and run businesses, but then we would have to open up our schools to anyone who wanted to run a business out of our school for your charge. And that is not an option, really, in the educational world we live in, we can't control school safety, we can't control faculty safety, there's too many considerations around that. So really, what we need to do is make sure that we don't provide access to certain people for free, so that they can run a more profitable business. So certain tutoring students raise charge, providing extra help, teachers have done that since the beginning of time, and I'm sure that with our teachers, that a lot of that kind of is going to continue.
And then, and one more. Bullet four says, active Boxer Regional School District teachers may not recommend an apartment of, of these kids or her own students receive tutoring, rather, teachers should offer extra help and support materials for their students. So I, I was intrigued by that. I, I get that, that the current policy doesn't pass its test. Who is better equipped to know if a child might need tutoring than a teacher or something? It's kind of seems like a gag order, and, and I'm going to begin using unpowerful language on purpose. And so when I look back at the FAQs, the, the second clause was fantasy pay. So can you explain how that ended up here?
That is not required by the ethics guidelines, that was a choice of the policy subcommittee. And to be fair, this was originally drafted by last year's policy subcommittee in the spring, and then continued to be worked through this fall, with kind of a lot of change in committee makeup. But I think there was a strong feeling that, so first of all, our teachers do give extra help, and there's a lot of it available, and we want that to continue, we know it will continue, teachers go above and beyond to support their students. I think there was a feeling, and, and people here or there that talk about it, so feel free to add it in, but that if teachers are recommending tutoring, then there's maybe stopping short of doing everything they could do for the kids, for their own students. Does somebody else want to? Does somebody else want to?
Yeah, so, I mean, I recall having this conversation last year as well, and I think, you know, what, what's really interesting is the, the third bullet, which says that anybody using the supervisory role cannot tutor. And so the thought was, if I recall correctly, we talked about the fact that a, a teacher providing that direct instruction should not recommend that someone requires tutoring. They should be the first person. But because the, the department heads in particular are not able to provide the tutoring, the thought would be that in consultation, either with the teacher and the parents and the student, that person who is sort of in the department people could say, hey, here are the things that we've done, you know, the teachers made themselves available for extra help, but there may be some other resources that you may want to take advantage of. And so if I recall correctly, we talked about that person who's in the supervisor position, who's precluded completely from providing the tutoring, is being that person might be able to work with the family to, to help suggest other options.
I, I think there's another lens on this, I put my, you know, and I'm not the expert in special education, but if I put my, how, then well, special education, a teacher is acting as an agent of the district. And if a teacher is saying to a family that your student can't make effective progress without additional support, there essentially has the district recommended to the family that the student needs additional support services. We have a range of support services that go through a process within the school, but if the district is going to recommend support services that are outside of our purview, then there's a likelihood that we need funding for services too. And I think there's caution around that. So I, I think there's really a fine line. We need to make sure that we have a robust set of services and the services we don't have, that we should have, we need to put in place within the district, because that's pretty appropriate for all students. But I think there's a real danger to people acting as agents of the district making recommendations for outside services. I think that's, for me, that that's what the genesis of.
And, and you know, the conflict of interest laws do say that, that committees can be even more restrictive than a conflict of interest laws say. I would just caution that, and I understand the constraints of the public school model. I also, just makes me a little uncomfortable thinking that a student might not have access to what he or she might need to be successful in school because of our policy. So I want to give that one more thought. It's complicated and, and I, I understand all the complications of it, but I appreciate your control of the policy subcommittee. So Diane, in me reading that for the first time, because I also read it, my thought was that that was included because it's almost like jumping the chain of command for a teacher to say, I think the student needs tutoring or more importantly, the way Peter said it, that, you know, you weren't, right, that they weren't able to make progress without added support. And so to me, I would hope that the teacher would think, oh yes, this student, this student would do better with tutoring, but then would bring it to whatever process exists, whether junior high, elementary school, to get more support for that student, rather than, like this prohibits them just from telling their parents, is how I.
So one thing I'm very sure of is that families in the district are key, that students have the best opportunities to learn and enjoy education, and this was a special activity is a reflection of that. And I think this subject comes up a lot in terms of what we do, tutoring, to various enrichment activities and how does it all fit together. So that I hope that, you know, as we've worked on these policies and how lengths of this, you know, we look at the district as to how would we wrap this in a larger message about, you know, there are a range of things you might consider as part of your childhood educational experience, you know, starting with the classroom and ending with some crazy levels of depression and lots of things in between, so that, you know, families, you know, in conjunction with advice or with leaders in the district can navigate that to try and align together, that are going to work with your particular needs.
Thank you, Marie. All right, next is Diane, an updated budget, updated charge. So we voted on this at the last meeting. Excellent, just want to thank you everybody. We have a charge, we have a schedule, we have budget guidelines, we are ready to go. The budget's something that we met last, on October 22nd, review the quarter one budget for April 20th update, which, right, the packet. We've been paying close attention to budget variance in terms of the past few years. And this year, as you saw in the guidelines, we set a target for total variances of between 0.5 to 1% of the total budget. So we talked about, about variances in various cost centers and projections going forward. So our next meeting, I'm actually, I'm sure, is it next Tuesday? Oh, we also, oh, one more thing. We did talk actually about capital planning. Chuck Flag, who is our project manager, who's been hired to oversee our, our capital group and is, is hard at work and, and so he requests or proposes by now for designing on some projects. All right, we have these reports and John, I know that I don't see HX on here, but I know you sent along a report, so would you like to report back to us about that?
I'd love to. At the health insurance trust meeting in, on 31 October, we have audited, wrapped by 18, is reviewed for the year, operated expenses were $17.6 million and unrestricted assets of the trust were $16.9 million on June 30th. Cash flow for the first quarter is consistently across the loss of $1 million wrapped by 20. Preparation of the 21 budgets, the trustees have provided health insurance, opinion guidance are rate increases of 4%. The actual base end will occur after the December meeting. The trustees will trial an active approach for prescription documents, remaining like the school committee packet. And I'm very pleased that Marie has offered support, care call, and our version of those packets. Todd Biggs, who will continue to support the trust by acting as recording secretary. And I've also known the health insurance trust now has a web page on the board and committee's page of the town of ACTON website, so you can go to one of these and find our stuff.
Thank you, Todd. KLG?
KLG Met, last week was it? So KLG Met had a finance meeting, everyone's talking about the same thing right now, events on the forum for ACTON. The warrant articles will be posted on the 26th of November and there were two before, now there's three as of last night, so a year on the ACTON warrant, the report for school will be first, and then the north ACTON fire station and west ACTON disney. That's, that's it for the warrant.
And I just want to note the tri-party, on December 12th, Beth sent out an email asking people to apply if they were coming to the tri-party meeting. BLOF, I was the only one who went, so that would be me. We really just talked about the, the warrant was completely closed on November 4th, and so that was why we ended up working with each other in our last meeting. There's not much of any substance. There's some least things on, on a warrant for, for Boxwell and nothing like a new fire station. So I think we're not meeting again until like January, so there wasn't much to say.
Can I understand for ACTON, the volume of the Mian Tech project, the building project of the Mian Tech, that is not going to go or will here on the ballot? Just probably another thing I would cover ACTON.
And just so we're all clear with the reasoning behind that, the funding, the, the project for Mian Tech is already approved by ACTON town meeting. However, it was not as a debt exclusion in the ballot, at the time it was funded through the towns operating budget. And so now, because the towns already funded that, they improved the project, they don't need to bring it to town meeting. However, they are bringing it to the ballot because they won't exclude that debt that is ACTON, it's been struggling with its budget over the last few years.
So there are two items on the consent agenda, a recommendation to approve a new digital photography club with a junior high and a recommendation to accept donations from Amazon Insulet Corp., or they're making trust and solid works to give tips them. Would anyone like to hold one of them and go for separate?
I'd like to hold on the first one. So actually, it's a great, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just wondering, is there, is there an opportunity for students who don't have a smartphone to participate? Because that's the one requirement says, there's no cost to students, but students need to have a smartphone. Is, is there, or is there some kind of an alternative that they could use?
Yes, we, I think one thing that the junior high has done is they've always made it a priority that for some reason, a student can't access a color activity, they're going to find a way to have that happen.
Okay, great, thank you.
This isn't specific to this pre-uni club, but in general, do we have any kind of formal subset, any mechanism on clubs, like we do in three to review, or is it simply that they fade out of existence?
So on an annual basis, we actually bring you, the list will prove of all the clubs and activities that are running at the junior high and high school. And that was done, I'm going to say in September or, in the August business meeting, I think we did that. And so when a club no longer runs, you don't approve it for the following year. Now, the, the catch is, you approve the clubs that have an associated student activity lineup, you don't approve if there's a club that has no funding, that ACTON certainly don't remember a long school. But yes, you actually see that over the annual basis.
Is there a motion?
And if you're.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions? All right, the last units. Okay. Oh, sorry, okay, go ahead. All right, is there a motion to approve the donations?
Still approve. With branding.
You want, it was impressive, it's $5,500. $5,500.
Very much.
It doesn't say it on like highlighted, chair, 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 what's, thank you for the addition, Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions? All right, that's to me, all right. There are eight words on the agenda and I know that Dave wanted to highlight an answer to a question that was, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. You may know, and Adam did, that there are a couple, there are two sets of invoices related to P card transactions. One of them is in with the set, the regular vendor warrant and it's because, and, and the other one is the detail and formal approval of the transactions that occurred in July, August, and September. The, the first three months, we used a different bank account to make the electronic funds transfer to the, to the P card bank, just to maintain visibility for a new program. We've since changed over to the regular vendor account, and so you see this normally occurring now with the regular vendor warrant. We just wanted to get comfortable with the new process and document and transaction flow, but now we have a, a normal process. And it's a little field, I was assuming this would be after you talked about the warrants, but just in case you're interested, the departments are using them with, with some increased frequency. We're still, my department is still evaluating the overall efficiency, but so far, so good. And all users have been authorized consistent with the procedures that we established.
So now, sorry, I hear you. I just thought it'd be awkward to stop in the middle. So vendor warrants 20-009 in the amount of $1,810,877.70, 20-009 PR in the amount of $1,057,291.87, 20-010 PR in the amount of $533,792.34, 20-008 PC in the amount of $20,621.94, Student Activity Fund warrants 20-009 JH in the amount of $10,033.92, 20-007SH in the amount of $27,452, and Paymore warrants P209, P2009 in the amount of $2,573,765.81, and P2010 in the amount of $2,664,664,446.70. Here's what's harder, if you guys. All right. So we have the need to enter an executive session to convene, convene, convene under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Anderson Boxwell Education Association, EEA, because if open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining decision of the committee, and MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grantee requirements, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22, add to consider approval of executive session minutes of the meeting on September 9th, 2019. We will return to a convening for the sole purpose of the journey. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So.
Is there a setting? We will do a whole call vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes.